Welcome, everyone, to the July 13th City Council Meeting. Welcome to the Scouts and welcome to everybody. So first up this evening, we have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag to commemorate Independence Day on July 4th. I’m honored to welcome Mattie Cohn, President of the University of Oregon Veterans and Family Student Association, and Brian Bender, Local Attorney at Law and Commander of the American Legion Post Three. And they will read the Declaration of Independence and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to start with the Declaration or the Pledge of Allegiance?
I think we’d like to start with the Declaration, please.
Okay, thank you.
Right up together. There you go.
The Declaration of Independence. In Congress, July 4th, 1776, the unanimous Declaration of the Thirteen United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature’s God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence, indeed, will dictate the governments long established, should not be changed for light and transient causes, and accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world. He has refused his assent to laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governance to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained, and when so suspended, he has utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in the legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants only. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of their public records, for the sole purpose of fatiguing them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing with manly firmness his invasions on the rights of the people. He has refused, for a long time after such dissolutions, to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers, incapable of annihilation, have returned to the people at large for their exercise, the state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasions from without and convulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states for that purpose, obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent of laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance. He has kept among us, in times of peace, standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our Constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation, for quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by a mock trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit of the inhabitants of these states, for cutting off our trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us, in many cases, of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing therein an arbitrary government and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our governments, for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves infested with powers to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burnt our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny already begun with circumstance, cruelty, and perfidy, scarcely paralleled in the most barbarous ages, and totally unworthy of the head of a civilized nation. He has constrained our fellow citizens, taking captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country, to become the executions of their friends and brethren, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections among us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers, the merciless Indian savages, whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which made a fine tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people, nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us, reminded them of the circumstances of our emigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnamity. We have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred and correspondence. They too have been deaf in the voice of justice and of consanguinity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace friends. We, therefore, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assembled, appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do, in the name and by authority of the good people of these colonies, solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are, and of right ought to be, free and independent states, and that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the State of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and do all other acts and things which independent states of right may do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor.
I just want to tell you, that was excellent. Thank you very much.
Well done. Good evening. If we’d all please stand, remove your covers, and place your right hand over your heart, and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we also have another ceremonial matter this evening. I’m delighted to begin tonight’s proceedings by recognizing a group of young men who accomplished something very special this past spring, the Sheldon High School Varsity Baseball Team, 2015 6A State Baseball Champions. Will you please come up to the front of the room? The Irish became just the second Oregon team ever to play in three straight championship games at the state’s highest level, winning the state title in 2013, losing a heartbreaker in 2014, final to North Medford, and then on Saturday, June 6th, winning this year’s championship in dramatic walk-off fashion in the bottom of the final inning against West Lynn. Irish finished their season on a 16-game winning streak, adding to their reputation for athletic excellence at Sheldon High School, has rightfully earned. Individually, the members of the team also brought home the hardware this season. Pitcher/infielder Taylor Frost, outfielder/pitcher Kellen Strom, pitcher/infielder Justin Herbert, and pitcher Wyatt Johnson received 6A All-State Honors. Taylor Frost was named the 6A Player of the Year, and Coach Manley was named the Coach of the Year. We’ll pause the applause. Several players were also named to the Southwestern Conference All-League Team, including Taylor Frost, Kellen Strom, Wyatt Johnson, infielder Matt Land, Justin Herbert, catcher Sam Olson, and utility player Zach Deal. In addition to the team’s very evident athletic ability, this year’s squad distinguished itself for having that intangible spirit that defines champions. Led by their five seniors and Coach Manley, this relatively young team grew throughout the season, building friendships, learning from and supporting one another, and ultimately becoming a true team. The standards of sportsmanship and teamwork you collectively modeled are to be celebrated. And thanks to the great leadership and talent, the future of Sheldon Baseball is in very good hands. We are all extremely proud of the way you have represented your school, your families, and our community. We wish you well in all of your future academic and athletic endeavors, and we thank you for allowing us to honor you in this way. Summer commitments and activities make it difficult to get the whole team here tonight, but we are grateful to those present, who are present, Coach Stan Manley, Coach Jim Reis, Coach Jim Pryback, Sam Olson, Justice Adams, Dylan Hanson, Dylan Dudley, Wyatt Johnson, Kellen Strom, and Coach Brian Vogel. Please join me in congratulating this very deserving team of young men and their coach. Back to work. Next up is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight’s agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have three people signed up. Richard Herman is first, followed by Steve Bade.
Good evening, Mayor Percy, and council members. My name is Richard Herman. I’m the Executive Director of Cornerstone Community Housing, and our office is on 1175 Charnleton. So I’m here speaking in support of the agenda item you have, the consent agenda item, in support of affordable housing in Santa Clara. We’re going to be acquiring and rehabbing eight units of housing that’s going to be dedicated to homeless families with children, and I’m sure that there’ll be a few veterans in that group as well as we move forward. So we’re going to have a collaboration with other agencies as we find these folks, and they’ll have case management, and it’s just going to be a great program in terms of serving these folks. So the proposal is before you, and it’s well documented by staff, so really what I wanted to do is come and thank all of you for your ongoing support of affordable housing, and also to thank the staff. This was the first time that we did a new program where we were combining cities of Eugene and Springfield, and I think that went very well. And thanks to Ellen May Galloway and Stephanie Jennings, they really helped orchestrate that and implementing a new process. So again, thank you, and so I want to thank you on behalf of the homeless families with children. Thank you on behalf of other providers who will be providing housing to clients that they’re serving. And third, to thank you for Cornerstone Community Housing and our Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Steve Bade, followed by Adrian DeFlorio.
Hi, my name is Steve Bade. I live in Eugene in Ward One. I am a member of the city’s Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the BPAC. We advise transportation planning staff and community partners on the transportation system plan, and we represent community and constituent interests in transportation planning decisions. BPAC members have occasionally come before you in the past. I’m here just to let you know what we’ve been doing recently. There’s Sunday Streets coming up on Sunday, July 26th. I hope you can all enjoy it. The BPAC recently talked with staff about the upcoming Willamette Street Trial restriping. The BPAC inputs on pavement, bond, measure, pedestrian, and bicycle projects at the level of particular segments in the transportation system, such as specific curb cuts, which bike lanes on what streets. We try to help understand and decide how best to get value for the money the city spends. Our goal at the highest level is to help plan and build a network for getting around that supports everyone in our city, people of all ages and abilities, bike riders, bus users, and automobile and truck drivers. Another big initiative we’re advising on is the possible David Minor Bike Way on 13th. BPAC is helping staff better to codify what a bike bollard is, how to integrate different kinds of safe transportation options for all users into our streets and infrastructure. I’m so pleased Eugene responded to the U.S. Department of Transportation Mayor’s challenge for safer people and safer streets this spring. I bet you’ve heard some big cities in the U.S., including Portland, have adopted Vision Zero, a worldwide road traffic safety project which aims to achieve roadways that have no fatalities or serious injuries in traffic. City transportation planning staff and the BPAC are talking about what adopting Vision Zero might mean here, how important that could be to Eugene. I appreciate the privilege of serving on this advisory committee and the opportunity this evening to give you a brief update. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Adrian DeFlorio is next.
Hello, my name is Adrian DeFlorio, and I’m not affiliated with any special party or anything like that. I come before you tonight to humbly ask you to recognize the importance of the Fourth Amendment of the United States of America Constitution and the violation that all of us as citizens have been subjected to over the years since the Patriot Act was established in 2001 after a very destructive and detrimental event happened with 9/11. And just how much work is happening at a federal level right now, I really appreciate on behalf of Representative Peter DeFazio and Ron Wyden about our privacy law, about the work they can do. However, however, we are not doing enough here as local citizens to stand up for the people who are disproportionately affected by the Fourth Amendment, including the most vulnerable citizens we have. That includes children, persons with disabilities, and the elderly. When we allow Fourth Amendment violation, we allow First Amendment violation, 13th Amendment violation, and 14th Amendment violation disproportionately affecting the most vulnerable citizens we have in America. For example, even though I am very proud of us, we’ve celebrated another Fourth of July, and fortunately, there weren’t more fires, I’m very pleased with that. However, as we have celebrated another Fourth of July, I want to remind us that we do not really live by the land of the free and the home of the brave as best as we can as American citizens. For example, President Carter, in a TED Talk, reminded us that we now have more slavery in this nation in the form of sex slavery, including girls at the age of 11, that is when they often start in sex slavery, and that is still a reality in the United States. We have more slaves in this nation now than we did during the Civil War. When people were willing to give their lives, they were willing to fight with everything they had, their words, their body, their blood, to ensure the rights of citizens. And yet, I have been the victim of so many crimes after giving everything I could to this community. I have worked here, I have volunteered here. I attended the University of Oregon, graduated on time despite mental illness at the age of 22, even though I was going blind, and I wasn’t allowed special accommodations. I continue to serve this community, continue to work despite violations, have applied to many places, and am looking forward to working again as an employed citizen here and paying taxes. However, our taxpayer dollars that we pay in the city of Eugene need to go back to protect the citizens of Eugene and not to work against us. We are no longer to allow exploitation of disabled citizens, or children, or the elderly in the way that I have seen allowed in this city so far. The complacency needs to end, and the denial needs to end. What I demand to see is a detailed assessment of the Fourth Amendment breaches in Eugene made available to the public by the end of August, plans to address the effect of the Fourth Amendment violation, acknowledgment of the targeted training for law enforcement of the ripple effect of the Fourth Amendment violation and the disproportionate consequences for vulnerable citizens.
You need to stop, or we’re going to have to walk out and leave.
Sure, no problem. I will be in touch.
Thank you. All right, I’m going to close the public forum. Thank everybody for coming. I wanted to make note of the fact that I am requesting that when we have folks come from our city committees like BPAC, that we just automatically put them to the front of the line because they’re working on an ongoing basis for our community. And Cornerstone, thank you. This sounds like a great project for providing more accommodations for folks who are unhoused, so I’m very, very appreciative. And thank you for coming and expressing your concerns as well. Is there anybody else? Okay, we’re going to move on to the consent calendar. Council President.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Yes.
I don’t want to pull items C and D, but I did want to make special note that by doing this consent calendar, we’ll be approving Funding Act Tax Exemption for the Cornerstone Community Housing, Delta Court Apartments, eight units on Hunsaker Lane. I think that’s wonderful.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I think we’re ready to vote on this. Did you second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I’m losing my voice by seconding.
All those in favor, please indicate. Four, and four is eight, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much. Next, we have a public hearing and ordinance concerning land use code maintenance. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight’s public hearing is on a package of land use code amendments related to maintenance of the code. This package consists of a small number of discrete amendments that address corrective or legal issues which, if left unaddressed, pose a challenge in the administration of the code. To ensure that the code maintenance amendments remain manageable within existing resources, the amendments do not address policy issues or topics associated with other Planning Division Work Program items.
Thank you. I’m going to open the public hearing. We have one person signed up, Michael Reader.
How did I know?
Michael.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Mike Reader, 800 Willamette Street, Suite 800. I represent Peace Health, the owner of property in the area located south of East 13th Avenue and north of the East 13th Alley. I’m the southwest owner of East 13th Avenue and Hilliard Streets. I am testifying today on behalf of Peace Health to support the Land Use Code Maintenance Ordinance CA 15-2, particularly the item that deals with the correction to the map that covers the parking exemption area in the West University area. The property that my client owns is currently developed with a parking structure and ground retail, ground floor retail. We wish to have the city adopt the corrected map that includes not only my client’s property, but also includes other properties that were erroneously removed from the map that includes property north of 13th Alley and south of East 13th Avenue. So my client’s property, as well as other properties, were intended to be included in the parking exempt area in the 1999 and 2000 LUCA code amendment process. However, as part of that process, as my understanding, that map, the map was incorrect. It was adopted by ordinance, and then in 2001, the city council legislatively amended that map to specifically include Peace Health’s property as well as other folks’ property as it should have been. The policy decision that was made in 1999 and 2000 was not reflected in the map that was adopted as part of the LUCA code amendment process. That was corrected, for whatever reason, in 2013, as part of the EWEB master planning, that old map was inserted and adopted by ordinance, a new parking area. That was a Scrivener’s error, and so city staff has identified that as a Scrivener’s error, brought it forward to the Planning Commission, and now to you folks for correction. We support that correction and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from City Council? None? Okay, we’re going to move on to the next item. That would be a work session on the City Hall update. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I look, Mike Penn will get his team together here, and then we’ll kick it off.
Good to be back. The project team is pleased to have this opportunity to provide an update to council marking the conclusion of the schematic design phase for City Hall. As you’ve all seen, the site has been transformed by the demolition of the old building, and the site is ready for construction to begin early next year. I’m pleased to report that the demolition process went extremely well, as Mackenzie Commercial and their subcontractors set new standards for clean, green, and safe demolition here in the community. As previously reported, 95% of the materials from the old building were reused or recycled in some form. The existing artwork and cedar fins were removed and stored for reuse in the new building, and the plaza pavers were salvaged by bring and now graced the houses, patios, and gardens around the community. All of the concrete of the building was crushed, and most of it was used as fill on-site, and all the steel and other metals were separated and sorted for recycling. Concurrently, the integrated design team has been working on updating the design, which you will see tonight, as well as many things you won’t necessarily be able to see, such as the building structure and the mechanical and electrical systems for the building. Following this council update, we’ll schedule some open house events and community group presentations over the weeks ahead to give community members the opportunity for a closer look at what we’ve been working on. And now, without further delay, I’d like to turn things over to John Raul and Karen Knutson from Raul Brokaw Architects, and Scott Wolf from Miller Hall to give an overview of the completed schematic design for City Hall.
Welcome.
I think we’re having a few technical difficulties, but we’re trying to get them fired up.
We’ll get the images up here. Thanks, Mike. We’re excited to walk you through some of the work from schematic design, carrying forward on the values that you set, and we’d like to highlight in this three particular aspects of the design, the contribution it makes to downtown vitality, some of our approaches to sustainability in the project, and end with what it means to do a legacy project, which seems like a really important question for where we are. I don’t think I can advance. There we go. So last time we came before you, you approved framework for the block with a clear overall approach, set forth the scope of the Phase One building and the plaza open space phasing 8th Avenue, building on the west half of the block, and then setting up the opportunity for the north and the east part of the block.
And the conceptual framework for that Think Big strategy, you can see here in the rendering that we shared with you last summer, focusing on a public open space in front of City Hall, very transparent and inviting ground plane that completely inverted front of City Hall, very transparent and inviting ground plane that completely inverted the council chamber and the work session room so that it became part of the public open space, part of the community, in contrast to the previous City Hall.
So we've talked a little bit about the framework from last year, and one important update to that is also connecting back to thinking big with this project. And what's important to understand with the Phase 1 of City Hall is that, of course, this project is much larger than its footprint. And what is being proposed and what Scott and John were just describing is a Phase 1 City Hall that frames and creates a new public open space that connects with and faces onto 8th Avenue, that is very much near the midpoint between Willamette Street and the Willamette River, and that would be understood as a public destination in the center of the city, that is a linking element between the historic access founding of Eugene on Willamette Street and the Willamette River that we all prize so much. Great public buildings have great public spaces, and we want to talk a little bit more with you about City Hall Plaza and the schematic design for that space. As John and Scott mentioned, the Phase 1 project is the western half of the City Hall block and essentially includes the 9,000-square-foot building footprint, ground floor, primarily public uses on that floor, ceremonial gathering spaces, parking in the northwest quadrant of the block, which would be a location for future consolidation or redevelopment on the block, and then a plaza significant, and we think, model for successful open space in downtown Eugene on 8th Avenue.
So we have been working closely with city staff on the plaza itself and understanding how to model successful public open space in downtown. And some of the strategies we're employing, there's the plaza, there's the building. It's south-facing, it's got a good orientation, it's got active edges, it'll be activated by adjacent uses, strong indoor-outdoor connection between the building and the landscape, places to gather in that space formally and informally, places to sit, engage with art, art from the original City Hall and new art commissioned for this project, tree canopy that creates shade for this time of year, places to sit in the sun, demonstration of stormwater that functions, a formal place that's appropriate, that's civic, but also fun, that draws kids, families, engages people, and there could be a water feature that would capital off and make it a great place to be.
And one of the things you'll notice, sorry, is this one? No, I don't think so. Hello? Chair Greenlight? Sorry about that. One of the things that you'll notice about the plan and the open space and the plaza is it really functions together as one large room. So while there is an enclosure, obviously, between the interior and the exterior, the feel of this place with the plaza, the chamber, the work session room, and the entry really is treated as one space. And we think that that evolved out of the idea of transparency that we've talked with you about for a couple of years now. And it is uniquely Eugene. We don't know of any other City Hall that is this open, inviting, and accessible as the proposal here. And looking at a three-dimensional view, you can begin to see here the activities in the open space and the plaza. These can be small group gatherings, support larger events in festival times, looking at the council chamber in this portion of the yellow area, the work session room, and the north-south axis that really connects 7th Avenue to 8th Avenue and ultimately sets up the framework for linking the Phase 2, or Phase 1 building to the future Phase 2 building and invites people into City Hall. That quality and activities in the open space, this is a very flexible space, places for people to meet, meeting an individual for lunch one day or a larger group on a weekend, ideas of play. We've incorporated idea of a water feature in the plaza. This has always been talked about as a destination, a place where families can come, whether they have business in the City Hall or not, and a place to see art, some of the art that was saved, commissioned in the original building, saved and reused in the new building and plaza, as well as new commissions that really demonstrate the city's commitment to the arts programs in the community.
So let's walk through some of the drawings, starting with the ground floor plan. And one of the first questions in a civic building is, well, where's the entry? And how do I find my way around? And that idea of a north-south axis, and really thinking of the building as having two front doors, to the north, to the south, but that creates a clear entrance, a clear connection, and that axis runs through every floor of the building, you'll see. And then connects you to this important room, the council chamber, which, by the way, is offering about 40% more seating than the previous council chamber in a more flexible arrangement, and then good back-of-house support with place for kitchen, workspace, restroom, and appropriate security. And then on the west side of, pardon me, the west side of the axis, the work session room, so both important rooms, really obvious and clear, again, offering more capacity, about 20% more area compared to the previous work session room.
And one of the characteristics that the team has worked very hard on throughout the project is creating spaces that are flexible, so spaces that can be used for one function or many other functions. And you can begin to see here, in a larger overflow council meeting session, there obviously room, as John mentioned, for 40% more seats than the existing or previous council chamber, but the ability to open up walls at the back of that room, to take advantage of the lobby space, to allow more people to participate in the event, and even opening up the wall at the work session room and either allowing people to see from the back of that room into the council chamber, or possibly projecting on a separate screen in that work session room. So when you look at the number of people that can be accommodated and the flexibility of these rooms, they're not just doing one thing, they're doing multiple things. Ideas of art or open houses, that work session room could easily be transformed, art could be placed in there, it could be a weekly or a monthly open house. Another idea is, oops, excuse me, larger events or conferences. So again, that idea of flexibility within the space, the team has talked about, what if City Hall could be a place where somebody could get married? Or what if a bigger conference can happen? A conference of mayors from around the state, for instance, could take place in this City Hall? And it's happening right at the ground plane, right where people can see all of that activity occurring.
So then walking up to the mezzanine level, some flexible office space, connecting, having good visibility to, again, the axis, which gives you a clear sense of circulation, of a meeting room that councilors could use, available on the mezzanine. And then moving up to the third floor, really important aspect of this project is to think about flexibility and efficiency, something that, a building that will last a long time and really work into the future. And the key, we think, to that is having a simple plan, simple structural grid that is open and allows flexibility. So this is sort of the basis of the third floor. And then as we think about, how do we organize that, giving people access to light around the perimeter of the building, really good daylighting for workspaces, again, organizing and providing a place of reception and arrival, the elevator and the stairs always landing in the same place, so you know where you are, and connecting to reception and making that really clear, and then access to a meeting room on that axis, symbolically connecting back to the city. And then organizing executive offices at the corners of the third floor and making a workplace that's innovative, it's a place to work collaboratively. But again, the walls that you see there are flexible. It will change over time, and that's the whole idea, that it can allow for that change and work into the future. And then moving to the fourth floor, again, the shelled space, creating capacity there, very much like the third floor based on the same organization, 9,000 square feet.
So we've talked a lot about sustainability and employing sustainable strategies into this project from day one, and what you're seeing is a building section, so this is a slice through the building, through that main north-south axis, looking towards the east. And some of the things that you see here are upon entry, you're entering into a double height space, the council chamber and the work session room all have, the ceiling is up at the underside of that third floor, so quite a generous height that's, we believe, appropriate to those ground floor functions. A stair on the north side that, again, works off of that axis and connects all the floors. And then looking at developing skylights and openings through the office floors on 3 and 4 to allow natural light down into the main space and also assist in some of the ventilation strategies. You can see a number of the sustainable strategies that we're looking at here. We've been working very closely with our engineering team and consultants to incorporate some of these strategies into the building as we're really designing this project on a path to net-zero energy.
And one thing to understand, when we added, went from three stories to four stories, we added presence, we added capacity and flexibility for the future. We also added energy load, and we didn't increase the area of the roof. The future PVs are in the future, the downtown grid doesn't support those right now, but as we increase in efficiency, that's part of meeting the path to net zero. But we've got a big site to work with, but we just wanted you to understand the implications of the fourth floor.
So last year, when we were speaking about this project, both with you and the community, there was a lot of interest in understanding the sustainability, as John was describing, and also how history is being carried forward in the project. The lobby space and the program on the ground floor is certainly a space that could be used for many exhibits, but we're also looking specifically at resources from the 1964 building that we could reuse. And one of the great opportunities from that structure was the vertical wood fins that comprised the full facade. Mackenzie Commercial has salvaged about 30,000 board feet of that western red cedar for reuse. And in the proposal, and in the rendering we'll show you in a few moments, we are taking that resource, that old growth timber, and reimagining it as something that has previously been a barrier into something that can communicate warmth and reach out from the heart of City Hall to the community that is coming to it.
So that idea of the, this is a section through the council chamber and running out into the plaza to 8th Avenue, and that idea of reusing the wood and doing it in a way that really wraps these surfaces and actually comes up the face of the building, protected, what's called a double skin, it's a layer of glass that protects that so it won't weather, but it really creates a warm presence and carries forward that legacy and transforms the perception of what often in a City Hall or a civic building can be, can intimidate of folks, but when you think about wood and the warmth even of this room, that it changes your perception of a building. But that idea that we began a year ago talking about, the people are the city, that this reflects who we all are, that it engages us, that the inside, the activities in the building, connect outside and invite, actively invite people in, is really important. So what would this look like? We want to show you an idea of where we're going with this. So this is a view from the southwest, the intersection of 8th Avenue and Pearl, looking toward the building. And you can see the cedar, the warmth of the cedar, the access, the visibility to the council chamber, to the entry, to the work session room, to that whole ground level, the whole building acting almost as a lantern. And then you can see the possibility of the Phase 2 in the east half of the block.
And we should also point out that this image that you're seeing on the screen is a much sharper image, so I think, working with Mike, we can make sure that you get a copy of that. It's very vibrant, very alive, and it's not quite coming out that way visually on the screen here. But you can see, as John mentioned, that idea of taking the wood, letting that be the predominant character of the new City Hall, as it faces the open space, faces 8th and the great street to the river. And a lot of the ideas that were in the previous rendering, that idea of transparency, the idea of the openness of the council chamber, the idea of seeing government at work from the ground plaza area, still very much carries forward into the work here, representing where we are at the end of the schematic design phase. And much like the conceptual design evolved into this, this will also keep evolving as we work through the details, Mike mentioned, working with the engineering team, the structural engineer, mechanical, and other consultants, that this is trying to convey a character or an image of what we feel like the building could represent, and again, understanding that that will continue to evolve as we work through a lot of the details of the project.
So what makes this a legacy project? We want to offer some of our thoughts about this and look forward to hearing yours.
One of the things that we have thought and talked a lot about in the past year and a half is that a legacy project is a project or a place that becomes very much a part of a community's history, is a place where that history is written, a place that people have memories of going to and memories of being at for many reasons. So the idea that Eugene City Hall, the building and the plaza would form a new civic heart in downtown and be that place that is intuitively understood by every member of the community and by visitors to Eugene, as the place where we gather, both to celebrate and to mourn in all sorts of times of civic import, that Eugene City Hall would be understood as the place to go. A legacy project is also part of a larger story, as mentioned, it's bigger than itself, it's bigger than its footprint, and we think that this project has an opportunity, of course, to connect to the larger story of revitalization in downtown, but that it's really a part of the community as a whole. It's about a way of understanding how a city government reaches out to its community, how easily accessed that government can be by community members, and to understanding what civics means in Eugene, how we practice that in a very unique way. And then lastly, making connections, that a legacy project is connected well and in many ways to the community around it, and those are physical connections, but there are also personal connections and detail connections, as we mentioned, there are memories that people make and that hopefully are built upon over time.
And we believe that legacy projects are opportunities to reveal a community's character. And in this case, this is a project that we believe is really rooted in its place and its history. The use of wood really talks about what we believe is central to Eugene with access to the outdoors and the amazing natural setting that we live in here. Ideas of simplicity and environmental stewardship are central to who you are as a community and what this building should reflect. And we believe it's a project that really is unpretentious. It has a character that has a symbolic importance, but it's a very accessible and inviting character. And that idea of simplicity, I think Kristi Hammett mentioned earlier in one of our sessions, it's kind of like the string of pearls that you can either wear with a very fancy dress or you can wear that same string with blue jeans and, you know, just going out for dinner. And that's the idea of this City Hall, that it is both a dress-up place and it's a dress-down place. It's accessible to people in suit and ties, it's accessible to people, you know, that are just coming in off the street that are concerned and care about the community that they live in.
So I'll, and, you know, we like to meet in Eugene, we like to get together, that's part of our identity, and I like to think that that's because we care. We're a community that actually cares about what we're doing, and it's why council is so active, why people come to council meetings, why there is an appetite for a civic place like this. And we think that the building expresses that unique quality of Eugene that many cities don't have, that that sense of meeting, of gathering, that a place that is welcoming to all, all of us, all in the community, is what we're trying to achieve. Thanks very much.
You ready to have discussion about it now?
We're ready for questions or discussion.
Yep.
Yep.
So I'll start out and just say that I, one of the things I liked about the old City Hall was its architectural effort to express access to government, and I think you really tried to capture that in this, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the understanding of how important history is. I'm a little anxious about the sustainability features, you just have to see how that all plays out. plays out. It's like I have a big appetite on a small budget, so I'm just a little anxious about that. But, and I, and the only other thing I wanted to say is, I do love the wood, the way you're thinking about the wood. And I also, I guess a big concern for me would be that when we're done, it's something that will last, that will be a, be a signature now and a signature well into the, to the future, that we do something really good here. So thank you for this, appreciate hearing about it. Yes, Claire.
I mean, Councilor Soret.
And you've got Councilor Brown as well.
Soret, anybody else?
Thank you. Thanks for this update. I had one question and then some comments. In terms of working with the engineers, I, I'm assuming and hoping, but I don't want to assume, that you're paying attention to acoustics in the council chamber as well as climate control. Those can be pretty important things that have a huge impact on the people trying to use the space. Can you confirm that?
Yes, that's confirmed, yes.
Thank you. Like I said, we don't want to assume. So I really like the simplicity of the layout. You know, I had commented before on the through-line piece being, I thought, very inspired. You know, our former City Hall really had no through-line, it was a lot of right angles, and this public building is a confusing labyrinth, I think. So this kind of straightforward layout might seem dull to architects, but it creates a public space that the public can actually easily navigate, which I think is, is very important. So I, and I also love the transparency aspect and the openness to the street and the fact that we might be demonstrating a new way to design public buildings and council chambers is very exciting, that we might be leading the way on that. And I really appreciate your thinking about the formal and informal dynamic. I think that really captures a particular Eugene vibe. And I expect the plaza, you know, if this design holds, and this is where we end up, that that plaza and the other parts of the open space will be well utilized by advocates and activists and others who want to be seen and heard by the council as well as the rest of the community, and it should be, prove to be a very exciting space. So, thanks.
So I've got Councilor Brown and Councilor Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. When does the design phase end and when does construction start?
The construction documents should be done by the end of the year, with construction starting early next year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Brown, are you finished?
I'm done, yeah, that was it.
Councilor Pryor?
What did he say?
Thank you. My wife loves to watch Home and Garden Channel, where they take people around to different houses and they give their whistlers of what they want, and then they show them the house and they say, oh, this has got everything I want, I absolutely love it, and it's about $100,000 over their budget. And it's a reality check for them, that what they want is often what they can't afford. What I really appreciated what, about what you're doing here is, you are developing a building that is within the means of the city of Eugene. One of the promises we made was that we weren't going to go to the public and ask for money to build this City Hall. We were going to figure out a way to do it on our own. And through a lot of hard effort and a lot of difficulty, we have managed to come up with the money to do this on our own without asking the public, which means we have to, like on Home and Garden Channel, say, what is it that we can do for the money that we have? And what I'm appreciative is that you have developed a building which has an elegance to it and still stays within the budget. I have a tuxedo. I've had it for 20 years. It's, it's black, basic tuxedo, and I can wear it today, and it's just as attractive as it was 20 years ago. Whereas, a lot of folks bought powder blue ruffle tuxedos, remember those in the 70s? And nobody wears those anymore.
[laughing]
And so I think elegant and simple sometimes are the best solution for what you want to be wearing in 2065. And when I look in, at a building, a City Hall in 2065, I want it to be a black tuxedo that I can still wear and not a powder blue ruffle thing that was trendy at the time, but doesn't really stand up. So what you've done is something where if I walk into that building in 2065, I'll feel just as comfortable with it as I do next year. And I think that's a very important aspect to architecture, is it doesn't have to be super fancy, it doesn't have to be trendy, but it has to be elegant and stand the test of time. And I think you're trying to construct a building that does that. And so from that standpoint, I'm really appreciative of the work you've done so far, that you've stayed within budget, you've created something that can accommodate the space, and even then a little bit more. And it's also elegant and will stand the test of time, so that, as we joked before, when people in 2065 say, what were they thinking, they'll be doing that with a smile on their face and not a frown.
Councilor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Great work. I, I really, really liked the concept. One thing I want to point out and I want to ask is this, you talked about the lantern effect of the building. Is the building going to be lit 24/7? Or will there be portions of the building or the plaza lit 24/7? Reason why I'm asking this is because I noticed several years ago, not several years ago, actually, probably a year or two ago, in another public hearing that, on another issue, on a separate issue, actually an issue that we were talking about earlier, Mupte, about the downtown associations concern, or downtown neighborhood associations concern around the lack of illuminated space within the downtown area, the downtown core. And so since this is going to be kind of the, the main focal point or the main drag of downtown from Willamette Street to the river, I'm trying to see where we're looking at in terms of illuminating that corridor, not just for the purposes of, you know, the aesthetic effects of it, but for the safety issues around that, so that we have less dark space during the evenings and more lit space during the evening, so people can actually, you know, move about and feel somewhat comfortable and safe in doing that, and being able to access the downtown nightlife, at the same time being able to, you know, move freely about throughout downtown without, you know, the fear of being assaulted or attacked or any of that kind of thing.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Chris's comments, because I thought, I appreciated your analogy, the Home and Garden Show. And one of the things that the team is doing as they gather this input and from the public, it's a continuous process of, what does that mean for design, what does that mean for cost? As we continue to go through that cycle, we continue to look at what that means. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's a continuous process for the team based on input and, and what we want to have happen on that particular site. So that's, there's more conversation as they continue to go around that wheel. But I, I appreciate the Home and Garden analogy.
Well, I had the question, was, was the intent for us to have the space lit 24/7?
You know, the, the lighting, the luminous quality of the building is really important during the day, during the evening, when there's council meetings and public meetings going on, and then through the, through the night, definitely, it has a role of, more of a glow, really. We're not going to be blasting light out of the building, but it will change during the day, but we imagine it will not go dark, it will, will have light in it, just like a good storefront stays illuminated. But then the lighting in the plaza needs to be really thoughtful, we're working on the design of that. And that's important to, for safety and the elegance of the space. So it's, it's doing both.
And I, I just wanted to comment that one of the things I enjoy about the development of the design with the, the skin is that you, we can light the, the wood from, from within, use good LED lighting, we have a very talented lighting designer on the team, and so we don't have to turn all the lights on on the inside of the building and waste the energy. We can direct the light where we need it, where it will do the most good, both on, on the face of the building, behind the glasses, as well as on the plaza, and find that balance that you're talking about.
Okay.
Indirect lighting is often a much more, I guess, pleasing or, you know, comfortable way of lighting a space. And as John mentioned, and Mike as well, if we light the wood and allow that glow and that warmth to come out, make sure that we have enough lighting out in the plaza at the direct level, but that's going to give a quality to that space that we believe will achieve what, what Councilor Evans was describing about creating a comfortable place for people to be.
Okay, Councilor Zalinka, Councilor Clark, Councilor Taylor. No, I didn't.
Councilor Polling.
Not me. Wasn't you, I, no, wait, it was Polling, not, not Taylor. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I like the, the openness and the flexibility and the multi-use part of the ground floor. I think that's all a clever design. I like the plaza, that becomes a very, very important part and aspect of the, of the whole plan here. I like that it's not trendy, it's not fatty, it's simple and clean, there's no slanted roofs, there's no corrugated anything. When I, when I talked to you guys initially, I wanted to convey that what I wanted City Hall to be able to be and say is, give a sense of this place, a sense of Eugene versus nowhere else. And how you capture that uniqueness is, is really important. I like the use of the old City Hall wood, that's good, and the open council chambers, lobby, workroom area, that's good. But I don't really get a sense that it says, this is Eugene. This building could be anywhere. And I, I thought I would be able to say, yeah, that, only, only Eugene can we build that building. So I'm a little disappointed about that. And I'm wondering about how we're going to incorporate our history a little bit more, other than the wood, which I think is a good idea. The history of, of our city needs to be incorporated into this, and maybe that's an interior display thing or something like that, but I don't, I didn't see that. Maybe you guys can help explain that a little bit more, if you've thought about that anymore, about how we...
Yeah, I, I can talk about that a little bit. The direction of the architects is really to, to create a space where all the different things can happen that we want to have happen in the building. And the history piece has been mentioned time and again, and it's definitely something that we're going to work on, and it will most likely be something more on the display level rather than something that, that the architects designed. But we're continuing to think about it and continuing to think about how to incorporate it. So I appreciate that you're mentioning it again, because it's definitely on the to-do list to be sure we get that incorporated.
Yeah, I think that's real important. Our last City Hall just had kind of a couple of display cases, and nobody ever looked at them, and I thought it was, it could be done a lot better. I'm interested in the sustainability of the building. I like the radiant slab and the daylighting and the passive solar design that's incorporated into this and makes for a very cost-effective building. And having worked in a building like that, it's very nice to work in and be in, so all that's great, but I'm interested in going beyond that. I'm interested in, in if this building is able to be a net zero energy building, completely done within the footprint of the building. Is that possible?
With the, well, I can let you guys talk about it, but that's what John was talking a little bit about with the addition of the fourth floor. At three floors, the roof area allowed us to just get there with a full PV array by adding the fourth floor, even with a pretty aggressive energy usage on the building. It's a, it's a little more than we can accomplish with the current rate of return on PVs within the building roof area. However, there's, there's quite a bit of sight there, and so we can, we can think more about how to utilize the sight. The way I like to think about it is that if we have the money to do more PVs, we might not necessarily put more on City Hall, we might put them on the Halt Center or some other place where, where we have a large roof. And so we're thinking more about sort of net zero across the portfolio a little bit more than specifically onsite with this building. Get as far as we can with this building onsite and then put PVs elsewhere to, to make up the difference would be one strategy. That's why we're talking about a path to net zero rather than necessarily net zero-ready onsite within the building footprint.
Yeah, I'm not thinking that. I think it's important for this building to make a statement in that. I think it should be a net zero building onsite, and that it'd be... Can you, do you guys have an estimate of the cost it would take to make that building a net zero energy building?
We haven't looked at that with the current square footage and footprint, I don't believe.
Can you get that, gin that cost up for us? I know the cost of full VTEX PV, solar PV has dropped dramatically over the last several years, gone from way over $10 a watt down to below $2 a watt, and that's been dramatic in just the last five years. So that stuff's become much more cost-effective, but all the stuff you're already incorporating into the building. Well, I'd appreciate if we could get a cost estimate of the incremental cost to make this a net zero energy building, that would be great. The reason I ask that, or talk about that, is because once the building's built, the most important cost, biggest ongoing cost we have will be energy. And energy ain't getting cheaper. 20, 25 years from now, energy's going to be very expensive, and it's going to be a big cost of this. And life cycle cost perspective about this, talking about this building on a 25, 30, 50 year timeframe, will make these things very cost-effective, and I think over the long run, be a very beneficial thing for the city and the, and the community.
Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate the presentation very much. I agree with my friend, Councilor Zalinka, that, that history portions of what we present there, I know or less, you know, about the architecture, but I'm hopeful that we capture the importance of it by how many times some of us up here have talked about it. And in other words, the space between the work session area and the main council chambers, to me, seems like a very public foyer, the, the main foyer of the area. And it seems like the right place to incorporate some of that work. It's about the people, for me. Who we were is, to an extent, who we are. And to see that reflected all around the previous events in our community and decisions, and how did we become who we are, helps set a, a tone and helps set a context for the decisions that get made in those rooms, and so I think that's a critically important part. I was also struck by the lantern comment as well, the effect of that. I, I enjoy the design, although I have to say, I had a kind of a different take on it. I'm actually hopeful that with such a nice design like this, with such a transparent design, that it will give those who work inside the capacity for a great deal more light to come in than is reflected out by the work done there.
Councilor Polling.
Thank you. Great presentation. I realize this is kind of the second starting point on this discussion. I like the idea of the transparency and the openness and the accessibility. However, I do have some concerns as far as the, the safety and the vulnerability of council members, the public that's attending meetings, as well as our employees. Looking at your, your preliminary drawings, it worries me. Counselor Soret brought up the fact that this community loves to get involved and that we have activists, but not all activists play by the rules. And even here, we've had flashes of nudity come through the, the windows behind us, behind you here. So my concern is, yes, we would like to be as open and welcoming and as accessible as possible, but we also need to keep in mind the safety and security of, of what's going on inside of the people that are attending the meetings, and that the city can continue to conduct its business in a safe, in, in a safe manner and not have to worry about the unnecessary disruptions. And, and I'm not trying to say, I don't want to hear from people, that's not what I'm saying. It's just that, in the past, we've had some incidents that have gone far beyond what, what an ordinary person would consider a reasonable amount of dissension. And that's a, a big concern of mine. And, you know, looking at that conceptual drawing right there, somebody in a little Fiat can do a lot of damage coming off one of the streets. I guess it's just inbred in me, a 30 years of, of law enforcement, that that's one of the things that kind of clicks in my mind first.
Well, in my introductory remarks, I said there are some things that they've been working on that you won't see, and we have had this design reviewed by the police department, and it's actually one of the safer buildings they've reviewed. There are some things that are being incorporated into the plans that will assist with the things that you're talking about, that we won't necessarily talk about in a public meeting, but are being taken care of and, and being addressed and we're, we're quite aware of. So thanks, thanks for mentioning those things.
And I appreciate that as well. And, you know, this has been a, a big focus really, at, at the federal level, especially since Oklahoma City, just the way that you can both protect our public institutions and still convey an idea of openness. You know, we don't want, we don't want those activities to force us to become a fortress for the, to the communities that we serve. We do a, a number of courthouses, border stations, and embassies that all are very concerned with those ideas. And as Mike said, those are, are things that we're definitely taking into account. account here and be prepared to keep you posted as it warrants as we go forward into future phases.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to think a little bit about, and I know you're doing a lot of work that we don't know that you're doing, or you've mentioned it, and we've, you know, but when I think about this historic part that everybody's concerned about, I think it's that what we're trying to say is we don't want to rely on displays. We want it to be somehow more integral to the building itself. And I don't know who we should be asking to help us think about that, but it's, one thing is to have exhibits, another is to have something that's in sort of the fabric of your, well, you're doing the fabric, but I mean, when you're building it, you think about, these things are going to be permanent here, not just a display, and they're going to reflect who we are and where we've come and all of those things. So just sort of, I'm not sure how you do that, but I think that's what we're trying to aim at here, is that this isn't something where we're having an art exhibit or we're having a historic exhibit. We want something that really is expressive of us, is permanently part of the structure, and I think that's what people are aiming at. And there may be some people who are very, have a lot of expertise in that, that could give us some help in thinking how to do that in the best, in the best possible way.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you all very much. This was very good. We appreciate it. We have one more item this evening, everyone, and that is Counselor Taylor's motion. It's in front of you. Counselor Taylor.
I moved to direct the city manager to remove the traffic circle island at Creston-Lincoln, install a speed table down the hill from that location, and to bring back a plan for funding the approximately $25,000 cost.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Clark?
I'll, maybe, since this is a bring-back-a-plan-and-bring-back-information motion, I would very much like to hear from Kirk Cory on this when it comes back in terms of the advisability and the safety issues and everything else, so...
Counselor Sarette?
Can someone explain what a speed table is?
It's a bigger problem. Cory can do that.
We've got a bunch of them. Ward four now.
Kurt, if you want to comment on the first question and the second, that's fine.
The speed table is simply a traffic calming device that, as compared to the traditional speed bump that you would see in a parking lot, you would, it could, for example, be an entire intersection raised so that the traffic entering it has the sense that they're onto a different elevation. It's anticipated, you get on it, and then you're off of it, so it's a more exaggerated traffic calming device than a, than a speed bump, more of an intersection-type basis. And to Counselor Clark's question, I guess could just restate specifically what you were looking for.
I'm interested in knowing your thoughts on the advisability of this with regard to safety, with regard to road capacity, with regard to ease of traffic, use of a change in this facility.
Okay, I'll just take a, you know, brief moment, I guess, to comment on that, and start by saying that I don't have a lot to offer other than what Mark Schoning, the city engineer, has shared with you in the previous conversations on this. The traffic island in and of itself, I think as Mark reported to you previously, is part of a broad array of traffic calming and context-sensitive design solutions for the Crest Drive project that, in and of itself, it's probably not a significant contributor. If you started peeling back other, other of the traffic calming features of the project, you could begin to see something, but is it, is it safer or less safe with the traffic island? I guess my opinion would be that it has little, little effect, and empirically, we would measure that by accident history. There are, to the best of my knowledge, no reportable accidents at that intersection in the five years that it's been in place. Yes, I would, I would not conjecture that you would see reportable accidents increase if you took it out, so no, no strong opinion one way or the other.
Okay, Counselor Polling, and then Counselor Brown.
Thank you. How many other traffic calming projects do we have in the queue to, throughout the city, do you know?
Oh, I don't know the exact number, but just generically, we would say that there are, there are always more traffic calming requests out there than we can fund at any, any given point in time.
Do we have any that are currently queued up? I know we just finished the one on Arcadia and the one on Best Lane in Ward four. Do we have any others that are queued up for this construction season or next?
I don't believe we have any that will be going to bid this year yet, no.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned about starting a new precedence about the council getting involved in the actual removing or adding a specific calming device that's already been put in place. You know, I know that there have been requests within my ward that I'm personally aware of for traffic calming that has been put on the back burner because just not the funding available. So I'm just kind of concerned about what kind of precedent we're setting with this and what kind of message we're sending out to the people that have been waiting for years for their traffic calming devices.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, actually, and generally, we would not bring this to the council because I think Kurt and his team are very good at deciding those kinds of things. In this particular case, because the actual design was approved by council, I guess it's going on six or seven years ago, we just thought it was appropriate to actually have the council come back and act on this. Normally, for any of those devices and designs of roads, the council actually doesn't vote and act on it. So this one's a little bit different than the others, and so we would not anticipate bringing these kinds of things to the council differently than we've done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I will support this motion. We heard lots of testimony from people that live in that part of town and also commuters, and it was pro and con. I mean, there was, to be fair, there were people that said, that's not that big of a deal. The people that said it was a big deal are the people that live on the cross street there, that exits out onto Crest, and I, you know, take my dog to the dog park up there, saw him in that neighborhood with some frequency, and they're absolutely correct. It's really hard when it's, you know, really early in the morning, it's not a peak traffic time or noon, you know, there's certain times when the traffic, there's more people out and about. It's okay, but it's really hard to make a safe turn out there when there's any amount of traffic flowing, you know, in the commute hours and the noon hours, and can be other times too, and it is, it's tricky. And most of the people who wanted it removed, well, I mean, almost everyone on that street wants it removed. Is it, which street is that? That's not Allevi?
Lincoln.
Lincoln, right, okay. Yeah, and the people that live back there, they have to access, you know, on one-way streets, that have to go on Lincoln to get onto Crest so they can get down to Willamette or go the other way. And I, I think that it is a problem, and it seems like a modest amount to, I actually think it would be safer if it wasn't there, and there was either a speed bump or it could be a table, whatever, you know, down the hill, and that would calm the traffic. So I will support this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Pryor?
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion around it, and, yeah, I am sensitive to not wanting for the council to begin to start getting into operational sides, but you did make the point. We did approve this in the first place, so I think we do have to assume a certain level of co-responsibility for what was put there. I think the traffic circle doesn't work. I think it's non-functio and probably should be removed, and so I support that idea. And so perhaps the way I might interpret what is being proposed here is that you be, that the city manager is directed to remove the traffic circle, but I don't see anywhere in here that you somehow give it priority over other projects. In other words, this gets added to the worklist of things that need to get done, and I support that fully. I think this should come out, and it should be added to the worklist, but if there's other important projects ahead of it in line, I don't want you to, you know, drop that and go do this, you know, go run and do this because the council told you to. So I'm willing to support this because I think, yeah, we made a mistake putting that traffic circle in, and we need to assume responsibility for helping to correct it, but I don't want to do it at the expense of your other workload. That's your job to come up with that and not the council's job to tell you what order to do things in. As far as the funding goes, if we're adding something, it would be nice to know where that funding might be. So it would be nice to know what that funding might be, but for me, my willingness to support it is built around the notion that I don't want to go too far into the area of directing operations. It's not an appropriate area for the council, but, yeah, I do feel a certain responsibility for this traffic circle, so I'm willing to accept responsibility for getting rid of it.
Counselor Clark?
Was this device and this intersection in the first place built with state funds or as a part of the original LID or both?
It was constructed as part of the project. It was a non-accessible part. As you might recall, we had some conversations around the classification of the streets, and since it's a local street, it was not eligible for SDC, transportation reimbursement funding, for example, so the non-accessible parts of the Crest Drive project were essentially paid from the general fund.
So would this have been qualified as a collector except for that the council overrode the standard definition and said, we don't want it to be?
I probably wouldn't state it quite that way, as saying the council did not elect to reclassify the road collector status.
Forgive me, I remembered that we did, actually, because that was a part of the decision-making process, was us, was the council saying, we don't want to designate this as an arterial or collector.
In any event, that is the outcome, yes.
Thank you for the question, for the answer, though. The LID part, that's the important part. The folks there didn't pay for it in the first place.
That's correct.
Okay.
So Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. This is a hazard, is the reason. I know that people want traffic to slow down. Putting the speed table in will accomplish that perhaps, but having this slight island at that intersection is really a hazard, and if it were bad weather, if it were icy or snow, it's really dangerous. It's, there is a deep, steep drop-off there, and some cars have gone down there. I guess there haven't been any fatalities yet, but cars have gone down there. And the people, as Counselor Brown mentioned, the who live on Lincoln, are really inconvenienced trying to get out of their street, and they have to go out there and to circle around that circle. It is, it's because of the danger that I think it should be removed, and with the possibility that Crest School, I think, is going to be reopened, there will be even more traffic up there. There's already quite a lot going to the Moore's House, and I think it's just, it's just in the wrong spot, and it is dangerous, and that's, and I know some people will be really upset if it's removed, but other people will be relieved, and I think everybody will be safer. Thank you.
Counselor Polling?
I realize that the $25,000 cost on this is fairly insignificant if you look at the overall city budget, but to me, it seems like the motion should redirect the city manager to bring back a plan for funding the approximate $25,000 and then to remove the traffic circle island. So I think we're getting it a little backwards here, and where would the $25,000 come from? That'd be my question on this.
You know, I don't know, we know exactly where it would come from yet. That's the piece that we'd want to bring back to you, and so we don't have the specific 25 identified at this moment.
So would the work start before you came back with that?
No, I think what would realistically happen, if the council approves this, we have the funding in place, then Kurt and his staff would work it into a part of their work plan as appropriate, and so that's how we're going to carry it out.
So if, for some reason, the funding's coming from somewhere that a majority of us disagree, we can say no, and the project doesn't go forward? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All ready, we're going to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. In opposition? One, it passes. Thank you, and with that, we finish the business of the evening.